Okay, let's continue on. Thank you for your indulgence in that short break. Let's continue on with the meeting. Madam Clerk, item twenty, please.
Item twenty, ordinance and resolution and ordinance making appropriations with fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and seven, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and eight. Any resolution levying the property tax for fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and seven, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and eight.
Pleasure, Council. Ms. McCavill.
Thank you, Your Honor. First time I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance and appoint the mill main and budget for the oh-seven, oh-eight year, including the attached resolution.
Motion made, seconded by Councilman Kastumpis. We'll now hear from various government committees, budget committees. We will start with General Government one.
Motion made, seconded.
We'll read the reports. Reports first, Mr. Perkins, and then we'll get to comments and discussions.
We would just like to know the point of order, how we're going to present the vote then, whether we're going to ask questions first after each ordinance or a point, and then...
The process will be that each government, each budget committee will report back, will read the reports, and at the conclusion of half grand agencies' budget reports, we will then entertain any amendments or discussion relating to the budget, and then we will move for a vote on the adoption of the budget. With that, let's start with General Government one budget report. Chairman, Mr. Seaver.
Thank you, Chairman. General Government one committee met March fifteenth, two thousand and seven, at eight p.m. in the third floor caucus room in City Hall. Honorable members in attendance were Chairman Seaver, committee members Cavill, Kastumpis, Perkins, and Sadi. Also in attendance were Director of Finance and Personnel, Dina Diorio, Corporation Council, Bob Yaman, Deputy Corporation Council, Left Tinker, Library Director, Mark Hart, Hufberg, Assistant Director of Finance, Dan Garrett, and Council members Nagerchuk, Stanley, Dassel, and Tavasak. Ms. Diorio read from the narratives and explained the functions of line items. Counting council, OT for attendance at night meetings, salary set at nineteen hours at nineteen dollars per hour, slight changes in other line items. Mr. Sadi asked if all other, I'm sorry, if all the overtime costs are paid through OT here, full-time salary last year was fifty thousand dollars, what other costs associated with this? Ms. Diorio said health insurance, medical life, about twenty-five thousand dollars, also increasing withholding tax. Mr. Sadi asked if there had been difficulty in hiring part-time person. The only difficulty right now is the situation with U. T. L. being hurt. Mr. Sadi moved to make part-time assistant clerk a full-time position and increase the line item from eighteen thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars to thirty thousand dollars even, and increase the associated attending costs to be drawn out of the food use fund. Seconded by Mr. Perkins, the discussion, Mr. Sadi said that the council needs a full-time clerk. Mr. Kastumpis says it's working with part-time person. Cavill said he agrees, part-time is work. Mr. Perkins has heard several complaints. The February agenda had mistakes when it comes during the day, sorry, when he comes here during the day, there's no one here to get answers from. Mr. Seaver said the problems will be alleviated when Jean comes back. Mr. Kastumpis said there have been improvements, no need for full-time. Mr. Cavill said the errors are minor. Mr. Seaver moved a motion. Motion was appealed with Mr. Perkins and Mr. Sadi voting yes, Seaver and Kastumpis voting no. Mr. Tavasak said it's difficult with part-time hours. We don't know the hours, what about public needing answers. Mr. Cavill said the young lady was brand-new. Mr. Sadi said that a member of the public has a problem, will call the council. Mayor said that Jean will be back in two weeks. Mr. Seaver said he's had difficulties, what are the hours? Mr. Seaver called him out of order. Mr. Sadi asked for a ruling from Corporation Council if the members of the committee can discuss an issue related on a failed motion. Mr. Perkins said yes. Ordinances increase legal notice based on prior history. The mayor's office, no change in salary. Mayor did not get a raise this year. Mr. Sadi asked about a three percent rate, is it reflected in the budget? The city clerk reflects a three percent rate, increase in office supplies. Appropriate court, we do not provide supplemental support for judge, to judge and office staff to post this up. Office supplies increased due to elimination of printing and binding. Mr. Seaver said no salary. Ms. Diorio said they are paid good state. Registerizing elections, increase in salaries effective January one every year, not many changes on line items. Mr. Sadi said any money allocated for education and training classes for public or machine, if they need dollars for this, they'll come before the council. Any testament on the machines, we already have them. There's a question on the ballots, not sure the state will pay. Mr. Tavasak, rental real estate, this is storage where the storing hole machines. Corporation councils, new part-time legal attorney, litigation driven by post litigation assistance, headcount and Eddie claim may need help. Police equipment increased due to copy charges. Money's left over from litigation, specials to be used for file storage. Mr. Tavasak asked if the part-time labor attorney does primarily labor negotiation. Ms. Diorio said she does. W.C. some labor matters. Ms. Tavasak asked where will Mr. Gashvatsky charge? Litigation special and special easements for sewer and water projects. Mr. Yaman said once attorney Rosemark is up to speed, we have to lower the shipment and good one fee. The town clerk, part-time staff increases for nineteen dollars per week for the year, printing and binding, paper ballots, slight increase in outside services and property products. Mayor Bowden said that his payback is set for a three percent increase next year. If you wish to give her a raise the following year, the committee will have to set it before she runs for office. Mr. Cavill moved to approve the salary increase for the town clerk by a three percent for fiscal year two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, and for two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine year. Mr. Kastumpis, seconded, motion passed unanimously. Mr. Tavasak asked if Ms. Diorio, the town clerk, has any front-line Spanish-speaking employees? Issue with marriage license. Ms. Diorio said not this time. Permit coordination, no staffing changes, added cellphone for the director. Planning zoning, no staffing changes, professional services and training up slightly. Mr. Seaver said the unit is no longer affiliated with this department. Mayor said still recording through a permit center. Mr. Seaver asked about need for zoning officer in P.M.Z. in the unit. Mayor said both have zoning officers. Mr. Perkins asked how our different street space prioritize. Mayor said two ways, availability for funding and order in which they were bonded. This is determined by the mayor. Planning director and city engineer. Mr. Sadi asked about zoning enforcement officer, do they go out at night? Mayor said that they have authorization to go out, but this line item is for plan review at City Hall. The unit handles enforcement. This petition does not cite plan review. The Office of Economic Development, they added a part-time money for nutmeg games in summer of two thousand and eight. Professional services, host fee for the games, travel mileage. Mr. Shepherd, Mr. Shepherd will travel across the state for publicity for the games. Mr. Tavasak said that Mr. Shepherd asked for twenty-five thousand dollars last year, but it was cut. Ms. Diorio said the city is doing this in conjunction with other associations, raising private funds, corporate sponsorships. Is the city's responsibility to pay the host fees? Sports organization is matching dollar-to-dollar for running the event. What is the expected benefit? We're going to have six thousand athletes in our city for two weeks, using our hotels and restaurants. Any other expenses, I.D. police, most are staffed by volunteers. Mr. Perkins, seventy-nine, sixty-dollar part-time help. What year and paper will we have to get? And answer was W.C. points. The Danbury Conservation Commission, this is support we provide the old quarry nature center. PD fuel is new. Mr. Tavasak asked why isn't this in the new park building budget? We don't own the building, we just give money. The Fair Land Commission, everything is at current levels. The Lake Authority, slight increases. Mr. Sadi asked what does the city get from the Henry Lake Authority as a benefit? As to what actually happens with the lake, CLA provides officers, education programs, project team, science programs, boat licenses, and they've been involved with new owners discussing environmental center. City has proposed a rate increase. Mr. Sadi said we just get one vote, there are five towns involved, and yes, we just get the one vote. Danbury Public Library, no change in full-time staff, part-time increase, part-time hours, posted up slightly, travel and mileage up slightly, printing and binding for additional publications, added twenty-five thousand dollars expenses that were deemed ineligible for LOCIP. Mr. Sadi asked what makes up the increase about site service line item. Sixty thousand dollars for special police officers, six thousand for internet line, twenty thousand catalog and book ordering, seventy-three hundred forty teams, dollar thirteen program, adults sixty-seven hundred dollars, ELS one thousand, collection agencies, computer support. Mr. Tavasak asked if cleaning services for this, is for this library. Mr. Perkins asked if the same contractor does the service. They are private contractor who hires people and are bonded. Mr. Tavasak, if an outside group uses the Faribault, do they need to have a storey in there? Mr. Hascharl said all problems, complaints, and when the library closed. Longridge Library, no changes. Mr. Perkins has heard from constituents who are concerned that they're getting no increase. Cavill said the library is going to be eliminated, the funding has been restored. Mayor said if they want to come in with a plan to offer more services, we'd be happy to talk to them. We want a strategy to justify more money. The airport, no staffing change, overtime sleazy for new staff person, part-time for additional security, cellphones for new staff person, outside services, repairs for rotating beacons and new poles, maintenance, other repairs to the runway, equipment, other new lawnmowers. Sadi increased after, increased for motor fuel because of fire department tank. They gas up there, as do other departments, this number will be lower once it comes repaired. Any requests for new vehicles? Mr. Estefan and Ms. D- our girl, I never say your name, my apologies. Are working together. Mr. Tavasak asked about funds for track repair. He said needs have to be done every year. The heart, we get funds reimbursed. Cavill said there are complaints about reduced number of bus runs. Can we discuss with heart and maintain? Mayor said we're working on additional runs. There's a need for increased pickups. We want to complement their services. Mr. Perkins said the justice is involved. Mr. Cavill moved to adopt the General Government one budget presented. Mr. Kastumpis, seconded, motion passed three. Mr. Seaver, Kastumpis in favor, and two against Sadi and Perkins. Mr. Cavill moved to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Sadi, motion unanimously, meeting adjourned at nine-ten.
Respectfully submitted, Chairman. Mr. Seaver, General Government two.
You've got to bear with me, Mr. Mayor, this is very small print. The General Government two budget committee met on October, March twelfth, two thousand and seven, at six o'clock in the third room caucus, in the third floor caucus room in City Hall. In attendance were Chairwoman Basso, committee members Johnson, Rattell, and Tavasak. Mr. Trimbetta is out of town because his father is ill. Also in attendance were Director of Finance and Personal Director, Dina Dioria, Chief of Staff, Michael McLaughlin of the mayor's office, council members Kastumpis, Sadi, Chenisi, Seaver, Visconti, Esposito, Cavill, Stanley, and Perkins, City Treasurer, Dan Jowdy, and Assistant Director of Finance, Dan Garrett, and members of the public. Ms. Dioria read from the narrative and explained the functions of the line items. Finance Department, salary, salaries is, salary is low, the finance director replacement will take, will make less than Mrs. Dioria makes. Mr. Rattell asked, five-oh-three-oh overtime, what is it used for? Preparation for budget. New Kronos program at both ends of the fiscal year, beginning of next year. Ms. Tavasak, loss of Executive Secretary and addition of new position. Ms. Dioria said same person with new increased responsibilities. Ms. Tavasak asked, will there be a separation of positions of Finance and Personal Director? Can we lower the hundred-and-twenty thousand to a hundred thousand and still get a good person? Ms. Dioria said it would be separate and that the average for the state, and that's the average for the state. Mr. Sadi, separation of Finance and Personal Director, how will the separation work? Mayor plans to keep Ms. Alaska Warner as acting Personal Director and keep the Finance Director as just the Finance Director. Ms. Dioria said no plans to increase the salary and personnel. Mr. Chenisi, objections to go electronic, but postage is the same. Working with vendors on the electronic, still needs to, need regular postage. Will their procedure manual be done without, through the Finance Office? Ms. Dioria said yes. Independent audit, oh-seven, oh-eight year, five-year contract, it will go up to bid. Retirement administration, fees paid to actual charges off to pension funds, dollars associated with pension proposal. City Treasurer, all elected officials get three percent interest and W.C. allocation. Data processing, Linda Ward, he works, he's in the police department, seventy-five percent and twenty-five percent in the fire, but he's not paid from data processing, but he is counted in personal total. Lease equipment, Kronos equipment, lease payment, two-year lease. Ms. Tavasak asked, what are these reductions? Fifty-three fifteen update to Enterprise Q Alert will not be done. Fifty-three thirty, regular for two new applications. Fifty-six hundred, software for pictro- telemetry? I.S. staffing at for people good. Mr. Chenisi, why overtime for D.P.? Data processing, Ms. Dioria said they could not, there could be equipment failure during the night. Major upgrades are done over the weekend because we can't interrupt the work daily. Mr. Sadi, there will be a three percent increase for elected officials, did the council approve this? Ms. Dioria said council voted for a two-year approval, this is the second year, and then adopt at the subsequent budget process. Bureau of Assessments, increase overtime in the middle of revaluation. Site development work, increase in charges for website, outside services for C-Wall to update maps, software cost for visual, no vision appraisals. Board of Assessment appeals, increase overtime and postage, revaluation is going on. Ms. Tavasak asked, who are the citizen commission members, and was told, unless she was told to ask. Tax collector, training increased, Mr. Ferguson going to certification, and Ms. Devine for her certification. Outside services increase. One, pay DM, DM slash V to do registration holds thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars. Two, hired a collection agent to track down old motor vehicle accounts. Mr. Chenisi, why did gross assessment for the motor vehicles go down? Ms. Dioria said that it was, that people were not buying new cars. The assessment stays flat. We did not hire a company who is going to check, we did just hire a company who is going to check on people who are not registering. Mr. Rattell asked for training in the middle of Connecticut, what do we reimburse for mileage? Ms. Dioria said forty-eight cents an hour, forty-eight cents a mile. Purchasing, outside services to update fixtures, fixed assessed inventory last year, nothing this year. Personnel and civil service, increase in overtime for staff to attend civil service tests in the evening. New projects, H.R.I.S. system to interface with payroll. Two part-time at nineteen hours each. Training increase, management development training, one hundred, one thousand five hundred dollars module. We'll do four modules next year, and computer training. Mr. Sadi asked, how will the firms be picked for the background checks and drugs, which work through the state? Corporation Health will not, was not available twenty-four hours a day in case a driver was in an accident and we would need someone available at 2:00 a.m. Mr. Rattell, how did you arrive at fourteen thousand dollars for employee reference services? Driven on what we projected in new hires. Drug, drug testing is sixty-five dollars to corporate health. Ms. Tavasak, professional services, less than sixty-five thousand dollars. Deputy Personnel Director, overestimated. Training figures are lower now. Mr. Johnson, who would manage, who would management training target? Ms. Dioria said the management at City Hall. Mr. Johnson asked if maybe later there could be succession training for those who may want to move up and get promoted. Labor negotiations, outside labor consultant. Council, shipment in Goodwin, negotiated with fire and D.M.E.A. coming up this year. Mr. Rattell asked why professional services is low, and Ms. Dioria said, last year we were in arbitration with police. FICA withholding tax, police and fire pay only medical portion driven by budgeted salaries. Pensions going down. Employee service benefits, paying contractual payments to employees Insurance thirteen percent over current year, drugs fifteen percent over current year. Post-employment benefits, five point four million. Mr. Rattell, for oh-five, oh-six, was four hundred and twenty-two dollars for dental, now it's five hundred and ten dollars. Hard, hard figure. Ms. Dioria, we tried to negotiate renewal to be the very end. Predicted a thirteen percent increase. Mr. Chenisi's, retirement benefits, pay-as-you-go portion, four point one million. City's required contribution is seven million. We're doing one point two million. Sadi asked, what is the total unfunded accrued liability? Seventy-three point four million liability, and Board of Education is twenty million, increased by, increasing by one point two million a year. How long until they were, they will be fully funded? Amortized over thirty years. Union welfare, health insurance with, for our Teamsters, rates are negotiated hourly, rates six dollars and twenty-six cents an hour for every employee that is a Teamster. Insurance, professional services going down to seventy thousand dollars, evaluation is done, so can take, so will be taken out. Not do again until next year. Insurance up, volunteer fire policy, increased benefits, deductible expenses, and W-dash-C increase. Ms. Tavasak, does auto include police and fire and public works? Yes. Mr. Rattell, is that what we actually pay out for deductibles? Yes. Interest on debt, included all interest payments for outstanding bonds and for bonds sales planned for July. Interest on debt school, current interest payments and other bond sales in July. Redemption of bond, principal payment of current bonds, pay down five hundred thousand dollars a year, redemption on debt school, payments due on outstanding school board, no, on school, outstanding school bonds. Contingency, one point three million outstanding labor contracts. Mr. Sadi asked roughly how much is divided. Ms. Dioria gave him a percentage. Capital, no referendums next year, five hundred thousand dollars in note, and five hundred fifty thousand dollars for lose, listed out of page three-thirty-four. New vehicles for health, five for police, replaced roof at public works, renovation at public works complex, fifty thousand for spill prevention control at public utilities, D.E.P. requirements, one hundred thousand dollars in pain, paving and drainage, seventy-five thousand, Richter Park Authority, master plan, Park Avenue School, burners at Mill Ridge School, a hundred thousand dollars for sidewalks, two hundred fifty thousand dollars to white, white streets, white street scape, repairs to field at Rogers Park. Mr. Sadi, with regrets to, with regards to Richter Park Master Plan, do you recall total of Terry Wall Master Plan? Ms. Dioria said, city paid for that update, don't know the cost. Mr. Sadi said seventy-five thousand feels this is high, do we know who will be doing this? Mike McLaughlin said Jane Didona. Mr. Chenisi, what type of vehicles purchased or leased? Out of this line they will be purchased, out of this line item they will be purchased. Mr. Johnson moved to accept the General two, government, accept the General Government two budget as presented by Mayor Bowden. Mr. Rattell, seconded. Mayor, motion passed unanimously. Mr. Rattell moved to adjourn. Mr. Johnson, seconded. Motion passed unanimously. Meeting adjourned at six fifty-five p.m. Respectfully submitted, Pauling Basso, Chair, Jim Johnson, Paul Rattell, Lynn Tavasak, and Charlie Trimbella.
Counselor, Education Budget, Councilman Seaver.
The Education Budget Committee met March twentieth, two thousand and seven, at seven-thirty in the third floor caucus room in City Hall. In attendance were Chairman Mary Saraceno, committee members Colleen Stanley, Fred Visconti, Jane Diggs, and Bob Riley. Also in attendance were council members Joe Cavill and Shane Eggerschuk, and Mayor Bowden, Ex officio. Representing the city was Assistant Director of Finance, Dan Garrett, representing the Board of Education, with the Director of Finance, Ali Olongo, Superintendent of Schools, Sal Pascarella, and School Board members, Richard Gennelli and Irving Fox, members of the public. Counselor Paul Rattell arrived at seven forty-five. Mr. Saraceno asked Mr. Olongo to make his presentation. Mr. Olongo said that the Board of Education approved a one hundred and seven million, one hundred and one thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollar budget. The major cost estimates are in the areas of utilities, transportation, healthcare, and the magnet school operations. Most of their expenses, approximately eighty cents on the dollar, are contractual expenses tied to various contracts. Dr. Pascarella thanked the committee for inviting them to the meeting. He stated that the salary and benefits make up approximately seventy percent of the budget. Stated that there are grants that help, although Title I money is in jeopardy. It is based on income and need. There is a shift in demographics in the town. Six of our schools have prior reduced lunch. The Head Start funding is in jeopardy also, and they are looking for other venues of income. The Magnet School had forty open seats, and we lost funding in startup cost funds. The City of Danbury is optimum funding for us. He stated that if the government rail's budget passes, they will get grant funds. He anticipates that the Magnet School will be at capacity by next year, and that the retirements will help out with the hiring of new teachers at lower wage. He feels that the budget is about what other cities are using. Mr. Gennelli spoke in favor of the Magnet School. He stated that they have startup costs right now and will become fully funded. There is a possibility that Ridgefield and Bevel will join. The school is a source of pride for Danbury. Mr. Fox said that it took four to five months to put the budget together after Mr. Olongo's work. It represents the cost of going forward. Mr. Dr. Pascarella said that they have put a limit on forming new classes. There are five new positions district-wide, three point five of them at the Magnet School. He may move some responsibilities around. Overall, he felt they would do fine with the money that they are asking for. Mayor Bowden said that the Board of Education's actual request was for a seven point one percent Aprilize. The city reduced it by one million dollars, using the salary gap between the teachers retiring and new hires to create a buffer. As for the governor's funding, she is proposing to give Danbury five point one million, and we are giving the school six point one million. If the governor doesn't give the city the money, we will have to readjust. The state works on their budget during May, and our charter says that we have to have a budget by May first. The current proposal by the government has an increase to education. We may want to pass a resolution asking Hartford to fund education. About fifty percent of the state's budget is based on the governor's numbers. The numbers will have to be closely reviewed once they come from Hartford. Mrs. Saraceno asked for questions from committee members. Mr. Riley asked Dr. Pascarella about the population vote at the middle school, and if staffing will be a problem. Dr. Pascarella said that middle to high school is the problem. Classes fill up, and they are staffed to the top. A full-time teacher at the middle school may have seven period, seven periods a day. Over a hundred and eighty days, people are teaching the same amount of days at the same number. number of students. Mr. Visconti asked, how many students are at Rogers Park Middle School? It was stated that there are one thousand one hundred and three. He also asked if there were any current ongoing contractual negotiations. Dr. Pascarella said not at this time. They are in the first year of a three-year contract with the teachers' union. Mr. Olongo responded that they are currently open with the secretarial group and that they are in the middle year of the custodians contract. The busing contract has one more year. They are going out for RFPs on the bus contract this summer. Mrs. Diggs asked if the Magnet School would always remain a K-five model. She also asked that if we are lacking in student recruitment at the school, how would they propose to bring in more students? She also asked how diverse the school population was. Dr. Pascarella said that the student makeup reflects the city's diversity as in our other schools. It brings other towns in line with the diversity reflected in Danbury. They are in compliance. The school is built as a K-five school and it can change. There is a Magnet School Advisory Board for the Danbury Board of Education that would make that decision. As for recruiting, the principal does presentations at each of the schools. They need other towns to fulfill their numbers. Brookfield got all of their students in, and Richfield is very interested. Mr. Visconti asked if there is an overall increase in teacher problems or impacts with the immigration issue in Danbury. Dr. Pascarella said that there is a bulge with additional students. Immigration enriches diversity, but it also takes away resources, and they are not in compliance with teacher ratios. There's a need to put students into programs. Mrs. Diggs moved to approve the education budget as presented by the city, seconded by Mr. Visconti. Ms. Saraceno said that the budget allocated, one hundred and six million, one hundred and six million, sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. Mr. Riley said that that is a good budget. He appreciated the Board of Education working with the city. Motion passed unanimously. Mrs. Stanley moved to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Visconti. Motion passed unanimously. Meeting adjourned at eight ten PM. Respectfully submitted, Mayor Saraceno, Chair, Colleen Stanley, Jane Diggs, Robert Riley, and Fred Visconti.
Thank you, Councilman. Public Works Budget Committee, uh, Councilman Bassa.
Yeah.
Oh, uh, stand corrected, Councilman Casumpis.
Thank you. Public Works Budget Committee met on March thirteenth, two thousand and seven, at six PM in the third floor caucus room in City Hall. In attendance were Chairman Casumpis, committee members Johnson, Nagerschutz, Chenise, and Stanley. Also in attendance were Director of Finance and Personnel, Dina Deorio, Director of Public Works, Antonio Idrula, Assistant Director of Finance, Dan Garrick, Director of Recreation, Nick Kaplanis, and councilmembers Cabo, Seabear, McMahon, Rotella, Basso, and Tabersek, and members of the public. Mr. Chenise asked that Mr. Idrula give an overview for the review of the department changes. Mr. Casumpis said he was going to have Mr. Deorio review first, as done in past practice. Mr. Deorio read through the narratives and explained the functions of the line items. Public buildings added a former physician and a plumber, implementation of the three-eleven monthly charges, utility services, seventy thousand dollars. Request moved over, request moved over to park buildings and cleaning services and office services. Mr. Chenise asked what buildings are in code thirteen forty, Public Works. Ancillary buildings, general maintenance for all buildings, staff support to maintain the buildings. Ms. Tabersek asked about the compliance for underground storage removal. Mr. Deorio said there is no money to apply to study. City Hall building. Full-time maintenance for gym, need to update fire alarm panel for security, safety equipment, new item. Mr. Casumpis asked, do we have a defi, defil, defibrillator for the city? Yes, on the second floor. Ms. Tabersek, any clean energy money in there? Mrs. Basso, cleaning services, who does background checks? Who pays for this? Mr. Deorio, custom care, does all our cleaning. Mr. Idrula said they are bonded. Library building. Significant increases in utilities, new holiday lights, use more power, cleaning services. Explored, have custom care building when library was open, and it's too expensive, not doing it this year. Police station building, utilities increased. Mr. Chenise asked, same cleaning services, custom care? Eighty thousand cut through utility service. Why didn't they get it? Mr. Deorio said they wanted major upgrades, but it is deferred due to new headquarters being built. Senior Center building, slight increases in some line, some line items. Mrs. Basso, is this for both buildings? Yes. Old library building, increase in cleaning services to have custom care, clean the building, replace carpet in Marion Anderson Recital Hall. Ms. Stanley, no need to increase heating fuel? Mr. Deorio said we should be okay. Mr. Chenise, who else uses the building? Answer, Danbury Music Center. Mr. Rotella asked, how is the roof in the old library? Mr. Idrula said he'll look into it. Park buildings. Carved out expenditures from park maintenance department and put them here. Cleaning services for Hatters Park Bankwell, outside services for electrician services, lights on field, plumbing for DHS Stadium, Winter Ice Break Park, maintaining building, increase to allow more maintenance equipment. Other, other, two new AC in Parks Recreation Office. Mr. Chenise asked, Mr. Idrula, what is your goal? The reason, what's the reason for doing this? Mr. Idrula said, majority of the maintenance was being farmed out to private contractors, but since we have expertise in-house, do these services better in-house and have better control. That is the tone for most of the organization. Mr. Chenise said Parks Department was to move. Mr. Idrula said, removing the director and secretary out of Hatters Park, probably move to Garage and Rogers Park, and giving more opportunities at One Memorial to move Veterans Council and other things there, not costing any money. Mr. Chenise, once Park and Rex moved out of Hatters, the goal was to possibly lease it to a third party? Yes, we're preparing, uh, RFP to manage the entire complex and possibly the pavilion, making one person responsible for the management and possible damage for events held there. Should be a profitable venture, venture for the city. Are the expenditures for One Memorial Drive part of this budget? Mr. Idrula said it's part of the public buildings budget right now. Mrs. Basso said Parks used to clean Hatters Park. Mr. Idrula said we have a private company that comes in and cleans up after the event. Ms. Tabersek asked if Mr. Idrula could enumerate the park buildings. Mr. Idrula will give her a list. Councilman Sadi joined the meeting at six thirty. Highways. Salary has two changes. Secretary for Director of Public Works and a truck driver, eliminate the part-time salary, slight increase across several line items. Mr. Chenise asked regarding overall operational changes. Mr. Idrula wants to create a new public service division of Public Works with all mechanics and a tree division, and park ma, maintenance would be managed by highway superintendent. Trying to strike a balance in all three divisions. Mr. Chenise asked if the drainage study has been completed. A stat is doing a study with all discharge points regarding storm discharge, part of the DEP requirement. Do you feel there are enough funds to address the drainage issue? Ms. Deorio said the money for drainage comes out of bond money. Custodial supplies, this is not with the cleaning company supplies, in other words, toilet paper, et cetera. Answers, yes. State aid, funded by town, road aid money we get from the state, we use the governor's numbers. Snow and ice removal. We don't pay for storm nails, we give employees a lump sum, but approve you, a few do not get the lump sum. Street lighting increased five percent. Mr. Chenise, we made a mild winter for snow falling regarding ice control materials, you buy as you go, stockpile. Mr. Idrula said we stockpile by the beginning of the season. Mr. Chenise asked, what we have left, about five thousand, two yards. We're very close to these numbers. Last year we spent three hundred and twenty-five thousand, and we're budgeting what we saved, but allocating it differently. Utility service includes parking lights in all city lots. No, it's basically our streetlights. This, then, Mrs. Basso asked, are we using the magic salt? Mr. Idrula said, we're investigating all tax products. Mrs. Tabersek, the street lighting involved traffic lights? No, they are now an engineer. It is McMahon, does magic salt go down in court shows? Mr. Sadi, distinction between amounts requested and what the mayor gave? Mr. Deorio said it's based on revenue. Ice control always funds three hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty thousand. We have higher revenue, so we can allocate. Mr. Chenise, given, given the growth of the west side of Danbury, would you consider putting a storage place for a truck over there? Mr. Idrula said, we currently use an area next to the airport. It is critical, and we are looking to buy a temporary shed to cover salt and sand. Park maintenance and forestry, staffing changes, reassign informants to public utilities. We'll leave the two park maintenance and added labor part of consolidation of overtime current. Cleaning services and office services will be to new department. Cleaning moves new parks and heating fuels, equipment, other allocated to new department. Sewer assessment for Kendall and Hatters Park out of this account. Mr. Chenise asked to elaborate on the major objectives, how to recount those steps. Mr. Idrula said, we program the changes into a schedule and use our magic power to get them down. What do we need to do for the nutmeg games? Extra line of the fields, extra garbage panels, additional field prep, all are in this budget. Kendall Park, lots of tree work, removing dead bus, replacing the beach. Mr. Casumpis said, hey, Kendall, partner to deal with the milk boy. Kendall, late thirty, is taking the lead on this. Mrs. Basso asked, who will grow the stuffs? Mr. Idrula said, we have our own stuff right now. Ms. Tabersek, nothing given during July two thousand and eight. Starting to get ready now, some truck work to, to work on the field. Mr. Perkins joins the meeting at six fifty PM. Public Building Maintenance and Repair, Board of Education Buildings, add Magnet School to computerize EMS system. Mr. Rotella, will the new education building in town park be under your department to take care of? Yes. My whole plan is to run the work. We're hoping to get more funds, perhaps donations. Equipment maintenance, outside services, increase for towing of city vehicles. Most line items stay the same or increase slightly. We will purchase new radials for some vehicles. Mr. Chenise, Chenise asked, what building we're talking about? Building number four at the Public Works Complex. Why is it not all combined to be other buildings? It's on a separate theater, separate building. Recycling, solid, solid waste. Majority of dollars spent to maintain the landfill permits for year of the bees, reduction in chemicals, we don't have to operate scrubber any longer. Ms. Tabersek, what portion of outsides paying to AWD, the amount of the pops? Answer, sixty thousand. Mr. Sadi, if the Marshals decide to sell off AWD, sixty-two thousand include semen program. Do we know what we spend subsidizing the semen program? Should we ask Corporation Council about affordability of Bonaparte contract if AWD is sold? Mrs. Basso said, the mayor's asking for more clean city days, is money in there? Answers, yes. Engineering Department, staffing change, new construction manager and employ one engineer for water pump. Increase posted slightly, increase training slightly, dollars with the traffic engineer at the same level. Mr. Chenise asked for help to retain the briefing. Mr. Idrula said, focus and responsibility for engineering is trying to develop a GIS mapping system in the city street opening departments throughout into this department. Administering all public facilities, engineering projects with dedicated people and changing the process to give a better handle on approximately forty-seven projects out there. Dedicate people on the construction side to administrate the construction projects. Mr. Chenise, is GIS mapping budget, trying to allocate people and how to implement the system? This is the beginning. The following years will request funding for this. Construction manager has oversight to third-party contractors. Yes, that is the intent. What about land use transactions? There's a dedicated engineering personnel in this. Ms. Tabersek, different forms stating highways, curves, and walks, it's for the traffic engineer to do this work. Ms. Tabersek asked, where are the traffic signals? Mr. Rotella, highway curves and walks, what are you cutting? We kept it flat funding, and we have money in bonds for Danbury traffic planning. Recreation Department, no staffing changes, part-time salaries for all summer programs, professionals save summer programs, day-o, youth soccer, et cetera. Cleaning services for banquet hall and office contributions is franchise fee to Danbury Westerners. Mr. Chenise asked, Mr. Kaplanis, what new programs will you implement? Mr. Kaplanis said, the summer program has been a big success, looking to get the fields ready, looking at new programs, perhaps for disabled children, looking to reach out to the athlete communities. Mr. Chenise, do you recognize any problems to tackle first? Mr. Kaplanis said, a lot of outdoor facilities need work, hard to shut down outdoor things to repair. Ms. Stanley, with the shortage of fields, any chance that football players will use the baseball fields? Answer, no. Additional lights install, will be installed to help. New field in Broadview. Mr. Perkins asked if there's any thought to putting in artificial turf at high-use field. Mr. Kaplanis said, there's a great benefit to turf, but the cost is extensive. The actual cost to maintain a grass field versus turf field, seven times, year's timeframe to get back the cost. Ms. Basso asked if the water will be recycled at the spray cave, the spray scape. Mr. Idrula said, recycling the water is not a good idea based on other towns' uses. Ms. Tabersek, a lot of expenditures going out to provide these items, revenues from gate fees and event changes, do they come back to this line item? No, the revenue goes into the general fund. Tarrawell Park Authority. Mr. Sadi asked, what approximate revenue comes to the Tarrawell? Completing complex, where is the money coming from? Danbury neighborhood bonds? Is there a time limit to use the funds? If so, can funds be used elsewhere? Mr. Deorio said, there's no time limit, the ordinance will need to change if funds be used for something else and would require a referendum. Cultural Commission, Mr. Chenise asked, does any money been used for Charles Ives in the past? Mr. Deorio said, we give them a lump sum, if we don't track how it's spent. Lake Penosha, no change. Ives Disability for the Performing Arts. Fifty thousand dollar funding, considered transition funding, as new board is putting together the new season and fundraising. Ms. Tabersek asked, does this budget include the seventy-five thousand to buy their assets? No. We're coming to the council in April to do that. Mr. Sadi asked, where the narrative is? No board in place to do this narrative yet. Whether or not it is transition money is up to the council. Mrs. Sadi said, Mr. Sadi said he's trying to understand the basis for the funding without having a narrative. Mr. Chenise, with fifty thousand, we spent all at once. The money is there, if they need it. Sewer fund, no employees run by Viola Water, funding for one study only. Outsides to pay Viola, Viola, payment in Lino, nitrogen payments, keeps rising, which is why the funding was approved in the bond, the nitrogen removal study. Professional services are costs associated with tax office and billing, insurance is three percent, bond interest on current bonds and future bond sale in July. Mr. Chenise, uh, asked on the nitrogen, the study status, project is in design, got state approval, money's in the budget. Mrs. Basso, the city borrowed ten million, where'd it go? Put into the general fund to keep taxes low. We're giving nine million to this company, where's the money going? Could we be close to the staffing levels to cost the city that much to operate the sewers place and collection system? Water pump. Redemption of debt, all existing bonds, no additional bonds next year, most line items kept flat, four at no change, need to buy vehicles per second crew, property taxes to other municipalities, small bond sale over the summer, chemicals significantly increased forty percent, increase of cost next year. Staffing changes, critical that the department becomes proactive, instruct me to maintain the mass infrastructure instead of being reactive problem. One crew for sanitary sewer and one crew for water for employee, uh, excuse me, one crew for sanitary sewer and one crew for water main. Helps to maintain mass number of easements the city has, overgrown, et cetera. Administration deployed the engineer informant and park ma, park maintenance here. Insurance increased, pretty heavy fuel going up, tires miscellaneous expenses up slightly. Mr. Chenise, major objectives, install west side water storage tanks that can reserve. The tanks are putting up for the city's needs for the west side, status of hydrants, we're down to about eighty out right now, and additional crew should reduce this number substantially. Mr. Chenise moved to accept the Public Works budget as presented tonight. Mr. Seconded by Mr. Johnson. Motion passed unanimously. Mr. Nagus said, move to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Johnson, must adjourn unanimously, meeting adjourned at eight PM. Respectfully submitted, Chairman Page.
I would, uh, and the motion waived for reading last question.
Second. Thanks.
Does anybody have any questions?
I really want to do a referendum.
Do you know front curses ahead?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the last meeting report, waive reading last report.
I think it's by all.
Waive and reading last question.
At this moment, we did, uh, uh, change, uh, stuff like, uh, what's your?
Thank you, Your Honor. In reference to Grant Agency's budget report F that was waived, um, I'd like to make a motion to have a transfer made from line item five oh one oh point six oh oh three, Hispanic Center, uh, in two, two sections. Twenty thousand dollars to the American Red Cross, uh, line item five oh one oh zero 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 zero, um, to be used exclusively for Danbury residents as required in the report, and five thousand dollars to TBI Co., line item five zero one zero dot...
mayor's position.
That's correct.
We have a second. Any discussion about?
In reading Government One, I thought we specified that you weren't getting a rate for your, you didn't put that in your budget?
I didn't, I didn't propose a raise for the office of mayor until it was called. As the bill council announced decides, and I wanted to give the office of mayors and citizens a couple of, um, special, yeah.
And my question would be, where is it coming from?
Those reasons you talked about, the police service, uh, all our maintenance services.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to include in that, as a matter of fact, it would have to be a different motion at this time, I'm sorry, Your Honor, it would have to be a different motion, on the assistant clerk to be a full-time position.
So, gentlemen, I'll try your minds also in favor, please signify by the same aye. I'd like to pose in favor the same aye. Further, it's meant to be a question.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to include on the General Government One Committee Report, to make the part-time assistant clerk a full-time position, an increase in line item from eighteen thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars to thirty thousand dollars even, increase the associated attended costs to be drawn out of contingency fund.
Seconded by Councilman Scotty, special motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. Once again, I find myself defending my position on this and maintaining the position in assistant city clerk to part-time. Prior to Jean's unfortunate accident, things in the office were running very smoothly. I was very happy with the progress that was being made in the part-time salary of that job with Jean's supervision. The timing of Jean's accident was unfortunate. We had just lost the part-time assistant city clerk that we had hired and were filling in with temporary people. Granted, there have been some mistakes, some errors, some omissions, but none that were life-threatening or really detrimental to our policies here. I am in favor of keeping the position at part-time and let's try it again for another year. I'm certainly sure that the mayor will revisit this, whether it's this mayor or another mayor, in next year's budget process. So, I will just stand my case again. I argued it last year, I argued it in the committee meeting, and I will argue it again. The position is working fine, part-time. I don't see any sense in changing it to full-time. Thank you.
Mr. Councilman, further discussion?
Thanks, Your Honor. Now, the position, the position is working fine when it's working. The problem is that it's working three days a week for about four hours a day. So, we're getting about twelve hours from the assistant paid position. I'm not, I'm not talking about the city clerk, I'm talking about the actual staffing. We've got twenty-one volunteers up here who get paid nothing. Thank you very much, Your Honor. I'm gonna hold you to that. We represent about seventy-five thousand people in Danbury, and they call us, and they should call us, because we've been voted here by them to represent them in Deer Hill. But we need a little bit of support downtown in Deer Hill. Packet questions, lots of things, there's an awful lot of ad-hocs that we're all on, and if we're not actually on them, we very often sit in. Most of us, we're on one or two budget committees, but most of us here went to all of them. We need information on when they're scheduled. There's overlapping committees, lots of things. I very often sit in on planning meetings, assembly meetings, and other meetings like that, and I need the information. It puts an awful lot of pressure on the staff that we have in the city. So, while I respectfully have to disagree with my esteemed colleague, Mr. President, we tried it for a year. In my opinion, it's not working, and we need to go back to a full-time position. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to echo the words of our esteemed President, Councilman Cabo. I agree with him, the office is, is working very well. We have two of our part-time people here. Jeanette is to be committed to the work, as well as our city clerk has been out for, how long has Jeanette been out? Three months. And the work was getting done with the help of many people. And finally, I'd like to add that it's very rare in government that we get to decrease the amount of people that work in government. I believe right now that the city of Danbury is the city's largest employer. Is that correct, Mayor of the Board of Education? Close to it. So, okay. But it's very rare that we can decrease the amount of people that we have in government, and this is a chance, and we're maximizing our efficiencies, and I see no reason to add the position back to full-time. Thank you.
I've been here twelve years, and I will tell you, it was an accident that Jean was out for three months. And you know what? I have seen these people pull together. We have had such wonderful people. Everybody came forward. There was nobody in this town that did not come forward. And as a matter of fact, you all know, I get a lot of phone calls, and when people had a problem, they couldn't reach the assistant city clerk, or they got somebody, they would call. That's, that's, that's our job as council people. We're supposed to be here to answer questions. A lot of times, people will call me because they don't want to bother the city clerk or the town clerk, they call me. And you know what? That's part of our job. And I think the last three months, we missed Jean terribly, yes, because she does so much. But she goes above and she's back now, and I say, let's, let's try it again. I don't think we needed it. We had, we have two great people, or people who were filling in, they did a fantastic job, and I don't think we need a full-time secretary. And I do know that in the last six years before this, there were a lot of times when there wasn't that much to do either, even with a full-time person. So, you know what? We've got the part-time, we said we're gonna try part-time, it's working. I say, keep doing it.
Wow. I'm gonna echo my own words, is that all right? I know we've been here a long time tonight, but I, I know way, shape, or form, without doing anything against the current city clerk, because she does it, I got the job, and I would never say anything but that. I'm just trying to get her some full-time help, and rather than the part-time position. You can just see the stack of papers that we have here, and we need stuff to earn a week, and a lot of times, it's unavailable. Granted, Jean has been out, and I'm glad she's back, glad to see her here. And that's the only reason that I wanted to get this position to a full-time position, to, to help everyone concerned. Thank you.
McMahon. Negertip.
Clarification on the motion. Uh, in no vote, if you give that, yes, oh, would, uh, the amendment pass. The charter requires a full two-year margin, not two-year present, which is not one year to. So, there is an amendment, so we should run the amendment right now. The no vote will, uh, be in opposition to the amendment, yes, oh, would be supported. Oh, wait a minute, I was saying, hang in there, yeah.
That was Negertip? No? Johnson?
No.
Trometta?
No.
Caladrina?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Visconti?
Yes.
Cheezy?
Yes.
Esposito?
Yes.
Cabo?
No.
Bassel?
No.
Vitello?
Yes.
Deeks?
No.
Consumpus?
No.
Royo?
No.
Sarocino?
Yes.
Seaberry?
No.
Stanley?
No.
Tavasack?
Yes.
I ask that I make discussion. Do the discussion on the, the motion. You come then, I'll try your minds also in favor of the same aye.
I clarify, we are now discussing the entire budget. I, I, if you want a lot of public people.
I ask that you embrace your.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I know that you did expect I would have some remarks, so I'd be very pleased if you allowed me to make them. Thank you very much. Yes, I did raise my hand. I'm sorry you didn't see it right away. This has been an interesting budget process. We got the budget early, we got it on March sixth. There was a public hearing at which four people spoke, they're probably here this evening too. There were six ad hoc committee meetings that department heads didn't attend. It was the Dina show, and our former finance director really did a first-rate job presenting a budget, and it's a budget that's not much different than the budget that I voted against last year, but she did a good job. What bothers me is that the budget process this year was really set at ramming speed. It was fourteen days and we were done. And that was without the benefit of having the first quarter sales and income tax figures from the state, without seeing what changes the appropriations committee might make to the governor's proposed budget on April twentieth. I know we always use the governor's budget figures, but this year, there ought to be alarm bells for us with her budget. Never mind that the Democrats have a veto-proof majority in Hartford, there isn't any Republican support for the governor's budget either. In fact, I think that Sal Pascarella and myself are the only two people in Danbury who support the governor's budget. You do, Your Honor, that's wonderful. So, our, our city's general fund budget is really kind of built on quicksand, and we might as well have used a Ouija board and maybe saved some of the paper that it was printed on, but it's very likely that there will be wholesale changes in ninety days that we will revisit as a council. And I know that Republicans on the council will ignore all of these warning signs and will rubber stamp the mayor's budget proposal, even though by charter, I believe we have until May fifteenth, I know someone said May first, but I think by charter, we have until May fifteenth to approve or reject it. In fact, I think that some members of the council will even rise to claim that this is the best budget that has ever been presented in the three-hundred-year history of our city. But it's not the best budget. It has shortcomings, it has waste, and it has duplication. And especially when it concerns the legislative body, the common council, it is underfunded. Thirty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars isn't adequate to serve the public or the twenty-one members who are elected to the council. Do you want to know what your council is doing? Do you want to know when the next constituents' meeting is? Do you want to know how to reach your council member? Well, you can call the common council office at seven-nine-seven-four-five-one-four, and someone will assist you ten and a half hours a week. Now, if you miss that vote, you can actually go online to the city website and try to find the information that you need. Now, if you don't have any internet access and you're a member of the public, you can dial up three-one-one, which is our, our new call center, and they will be having to refer you to the closed common council office to seek that information. But very seriously, a city budget shows what our priorities are, and I think it's obvious in this budget, that the legislative body, the common council itself for the city of Danbury is not a priority. It isn't. We're giving the Ives Center for the Performing Arts fifty thousand dollars in transition funding to start their new season, fifty thousand dollars. We're paying forty-six thousand dollars to be members of CCM, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. We're giving Dan Bartram a hundred and forty-six thousand dollar tax break for his new dormitory at Thirty Crosby Street. And yet, when in the Government One Ad-Hoc Committee, Councilman Sadi proposed making that part-time position full-time, it was voted down, three to two. What this says really very loud and clear is that when you have a strong mayor to set policy and a very well-run call center for the public, well, the common council just really isn't important at all. In fact, it's superfluous, and maybe what we need to do is revisit our city charter and eliminate it altogether. I'm also disappointed in the mayor's failure to keep his kind of state-of-the-city commitment about public access broadcasting. Now, I know, Your Honor, you promised that we would have public access broadcasting of council meetings and land use meetings, I believe, you said by March, and it's April. And we're adopting our city budget, and Danbury's eight hours of broadcasting on the government-access channel twenty-four aren't being used. And you may be secretly hard at work on this issue, but we've had no ad hoc committee reports from Mr. Cabo, who I believe is the chair of that ad hoc committee. I'm disappointed again this year in the grant agency review process. Two years ago, Vinnie Nolan said we had to take the politics out of these decisions, and we haven't. This year, the funding for the Hispanic Center was allocated to the Wheels Program and to TBI Co. We're using these grants like candy in a candy dish to reward or punish social service agencies, and that's wrong. We ought to fund agencies based on how important the services they provide are to Danbury residents. And I think this year in particular, the AIDS project of Greater Danbury was done a great disservice. Inadvertently, Mr. Riley told them that their funding request for fourteen thousand would be funded through the Interfaith AIDS Ministry, and it won't be. Their program was zero-budgeted. And the mayor explained at the same council meeting that we couldn't fund any new programs, and we're funding two. We're funding the Bounty Street Y and the Dream Homes Community Center. So, the grant agency review process isn't fair and it isn't equitable, and it ends up being the mayor's personal philanthropy put into the city budget, and I don't think that's right. The other area that I looked for in the budget and couldn't find was a wonderful two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar energy tax credit for the elderly. Democrats requested an ad hoc committee for, to expand tax relief for the elderly in June of, May of two thousand and six. So, this is an issue that our caucus really supports. Now, I know the mayor said that this tax credit would apply to households of up to fifty-eight thousand dollars in annual income, and that's very generous. So, if everyone who is currently in the circuit breaker or the fees program applied for this program, we'd be spending a hundred and eighty-three thousand. of Municipalities. Uh, we're giving Dan Bartram a hundred and forty-six thousand dollar tax break for his new dormitory at Thirty Crosby Street. And yet, when in the government one ad hoc committee, Councilman Sadi proposed making that part-time position full-time, it was voted down, three to two. What this says, uh, really, very loud and clear, is that when you have a strong mayor to set policy and a very well-run call center for the public, well, the common council just really isn't important at all. In fact, it's superfluous, and maybe what we need to do is revisit our city charter and eliminate it altogether. I'm, um, also disappointed in the mayor's failure to keep his kind of state-of-the-city commitment about public access broadcasting. Now, I know, Your Honor, um, you promised that we would have public access broadcasting of council meetings and land use meetings, I believe. You said by March, and it's April. And we're adopting our city budget, and Danbury's eight hours of broadcasting on the government-access channel twenty-four aren't being used. And you may be secretly hard at work on this issue, but we've had no ad hoc committee reports from, um, Mr. Cabo, who I believe is the chair of that ad hoc committee. Um, I'm disappointed again this year in the grant agency review process. Uh, two years ago, Vinnie Nolan said we had to take the politics out of these decisions, and we haven't. This year, the funding for the Hispanic Center was allocated to the Wheels Program and to TBI Co. We're using these grants like candy in a candy dish to reward or punish social service agencies, and that's wrong. We ought to fund agencies based on how important the services they provide are to Danbury residents. And I think this year in particular, the AIDS project of Greater Danbury was done a great disservice. Inadvertently, Mr. Riley told them that their funding request for fourteen thousand would be funded through the Interfaith AIDS Ministry, and it won't be. Um, their program was zero-budgeted. And the mayor explained at the same council meeting that we couldn't fund any new programs, and we're funding two. We're funding the Bounty Street Y and the Dream Homes Community Center. So the grant agency review process isn't fair, and it isn't equitable. And, and it ends up being the mayor's personal philanthropy put into the city budget, and I don't think that's right. Uh, the other area that, uh, I looked for in the budget and couldn't find was a wonderful two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar energy tax credit for the elderly. Um, Democrats requested an ad hoc committee for, to expand tax relief for the elderly in June of, May of two thousand and six. So this is an issue that our caucus really supports. Now, I know the mayor said that this tax credit would apply to households of up to fifty-eight thousand dollars in annual income, and that's very generous. So if everyone who is currently in the circuit breaker or the fees program applied for this program, we'd be spending a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, and that's much bigger than a breadbasket. And it wasn't in, uh, it wasn't the budget address on March 6th, but it's not in our budget. The tax collector couldn't find it, and the assessor couldn't find it. I'm afraid it's vanished, so I hope that the mayor, in his comments, will clarify on that point. And, uh, finally, uh, I'd like to close with kind of a Passover remembrance that I've kind of adapted, because this city has had such a long history of tolerance and inclusion. And it goes like this. Um, first, they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for the day laborers, and I did not speak out because I was not a day laborer. Then they came for the Hispanic Center funding, and I didn't speak out because I was not Hispanic. Then they underfunded the school budget by a million dollars, and I did not speak out because I do not have any school-aged children. And then they took the welfare department apart, and I did not speak out because I am not on welfare. And then they came and told me that this was a good budget, and I said, no. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, thank you very much, Councilwoman Tavasak. I want to be the first one to say that this is an excellent budget. And she knew I would say that. And the second thing I'd like to say right away is that, well, I'll speak for myself rather than to speak for other people. I never rubber stamped a thing in my life. I'd be darned if I ever would. I'm a former Marine. We don't do things like that. And, there you go. But, I, I really truly would like to say that with regard to this budget, we have given to the taxpayers of Danbury, we're giving them a little bit of a increase, less than one mil, somewhere around six tenths, forty dollars at most per year. And if you look around the different communities and towns, they're looking at three, four, five hundred dollar increases. Not only that, we are, we are taking, we are expanding our fire department, which is critical, because if you truly, truly want to help all people, you need to be able to respond at the given time, wherever, for all ethnic groups. And we, we have now also, in the budget, placed money so that we will be able to fund more police, police officers, so we have more vehicles on the roads, so that we could begin to make sure that all of us in this great city are safe. So, we're also doing a lot of nice things in terms of homelessness, veterans, you know, it's kind of nice to help veterans. I believe in that whole, whole heartily. And I think those are important things. But, but again, to end it up, it's a, it's a great budget. We put a lot of time into this, and we get paid an awful lot of money. I'm hoping tonight that maybe I can get paid two, two slices of pizza, and I'm not going to say beer, but I'm going to, and a couple of nice bowls of beer. And if I get paid that for a whole year, thank you very much. It's great, okay? And the last thing I'd just say is that, on the grant agencies, I thought that, as the chair, I thought it, it was a process that, that worked very well because I had sat, sat down and I drafted a letter and I sent it out to all agencies, all committee members, and so that people knew when the meeting was going to be held. I asked them if they liked to come, please come, and bring whatever documentation you might need, okay, to present your picks. At the same token, we cannot expect that one would come, if, from an agency, and all due respect to all agencies, and, and they would, would say things like, yes, they even know from their board that things are out of control, and that, do you really mind if we cut back a little bit this year? Certainly not. So, I mean, we can't give away ta- taxpayers' money when we are so willing to give grant money and just say, you shouldn't possibly illegally. So, I think we did a real great job on that. I commend all of us here, and, uh, my learned, uh, combat in arms, uh, rightly so. Thank you for your comments. But it is a great budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I'm not going to take the, um, that's, that's great time, Mr. Riley, but I, I agree with them wholeheartedly. Um, the twenty-one members of this council, an awful lot of hours in, many, many meetings, uh, talked to many, many people around the city. This is indeed a good budget, and, uh, I think we've done tremendous justice to, to the constituents of Danbury, and I fully and wholeheartedly support it. Thank you, sir.
Your Honor, if you would just, um, bear with me for just a moment. No, I just, I listened to Mrs. Tavasak's speech, and I just, I'm just amazed at the half-truths and the innuendos that she had, and it was incredible, just typical Tavasak fashion, and I mean that in utmost respect. This budget process went very smoothly. Uh, the four that I've been involved with, it has gone really no different than any of the others. The, the time is there, the committees were there, the questions were there, the committee members were there, and I want to thank all of you, the attendants at all meetings that you didn't, weren't required to be at. You asked great questions, as most people could see by the reports that were read, provided three of the five. Five out of the six committees reported out unanimously in support of the budget, and tremendous amount of credit grants, and it delivered very, I think, very well. And Mrs. Tavasak may have felt rushed, but it didn't seem anything out of the usual to me in my last four, so, um, I just wanted to ask you if you could just give us a clarification on the, uh, energy tax credit for the seniors while we're here.
Sure. If you look through the budget, you'll know, you won't see an energy tax credit for veterans. You won't see a tax credit for veterans. You won't see it for seniors. That's because we don't account for our tax credit programs through our budget. We fund those tax credit programs through our supplemental grant list, which we collect ad hoc to reverse the following year. That pool of money is about a million dollars, uh, that we collect into motor vehicles during that time period. So while, uh, somebody says we examine the budget, but it doesn't mean we're not funded, we use that, uh, pool of money to fund all of our tax credit programs, all of our seniors and veterans, our disabled folks, everybody that's knowledgeable, take advantage of that. I will say to you that, uh, part of, of the discussion, of our homework is to ask those questions and to get those answers, so it's only a valid question. And if it was my proposal, I would think somebody would want to call the mayor's office and say, where is this money? Your office is going to happily, that would be happily answer those questions, but as a result, that didn't quite happen that way. But at the end of the day, we'll be able to provide that energy tax relief for seniors. Our enrollment period will start soon. We'll back the N I, we'll start the third, two, thousand, two, better. And we'll manage that to break the order. But I think we might just, uh, for our tax credit.
Mr. Sies, can I ask you a question?
Good, thank you, Your Honor. I would be remiss not to give my opinion on this, because, um, well, I do, not necessarily, I agree with Councilwoman, um, Tavasak, I do agree with the other councilmen opinions as well. As you probably know by these, um, committee reports, I probably attended most of the budget committee meetings, and I probably asked the most questions. And I do believe that the only stupid question is the question not asked, which is why I ask so many questions, just to get it on the record of, of the, um, of the committee meetings. And during this process, I did see firsthand of, of the impact what the mayor wants, and I have to say that one of the best impacts that I see in, in this whole budget process, and I would have to give a kudos to the Public Works Department. I think during that whole session, which is probably one of the longest committee , uh, reports given tonight, I think that is probably the one most significant changes that I've seen in, like, three, three years here, and I think it's probably going to be very successful. And I want to congratulate, I want to, and a fantastic job done on it, which is why during our committee, it was supported unanimously, because it, it was a well-thought-out, well-prepared. And I think the city as a whole worked on it from that process. And I wish that other departments take that lead to look at what changes they can make to make their departments more efficient and more better, so we don't have to keep going back and, and keep giving you more money throughout the whole year. So again, thank you for that, for that, for that, um, for that work that you did do. But my question is, again, this really reading, why, again, one, part of my opinion right now is, is we're acting, they answered this question, we're acting whether I could alter this budget tonight or not. Um, I guess the fact that we felt like we were being rushed, that we don't have firm numbers. And, you know, one of the questions is, I really don't know firm numbers from the government. There are some estimates in here. In, in accounting, when you do projections, there are estimates, and I do believe that, that you need some estimates in your budget, and that's why it's a budget. But my question always falls back to how the fund balance impacts this current budget, and it does. In this current budget, and this is my question I'm going to ask to the, the Assistant Finance Director, the mayor, the mayor could also interject a little bit on this. That during, I think currently, what I understand is what we have on record, that we have about twenty-three million dollars fund back, give or take, a little bit more. Currently, we have three-point-six million dollars that's going to be allocated from this budget to that fund balance. And there's also this evening, we gave out three-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars from that budget. So the way I add it up, we have about nineteen million dollars that currently in our fund balance, that we can currently save. You know, I know that can change throughout the year, but right now, right at this moment, we have nineteen million dollars. And I know the bonding rate has, has the impact on what our fund balances is. I asked this question to you during, during today, and you responded back, that we need to keep at least a ten percent, which gives us about nineteen million dollars. So at our current funding level, at nineteen million, we're going to be able to support our current bonding level or A-grading that we have. So my question would be is, what if the, the governor does not give us the requisite support that we have in this budget? What are we planning on doing, how are we going to make it that, for that shortfall, given the fact that I don't think, I don't believe at this point we have much room in the fund balance? So my question to the mayor would be, during the next fiscal year, would you go into the fund balance again to remove funds necessary to make up for the shortfall in this current budget?
Well, uh, we just make that into parts. First of all, as we sit here today, we have twenty-three million dollars in our fund balance. We have to do a whole bridge of the year, three million dollars. In this current fiscal year, we project using approximately three million dollars for our operating budget on June 30th, 2007. Based on the projected projections, the expenditure level, we won't use the three million dollars. We'll probably use something around two-hundred-thousand dollars in that month's total. That means we roll over an additional two-point-seven million dollars for the next fiscal year. So when we close out the books on, through June, 2007, we should have approximately twenty-three million dollars plus what we roll over. Now we go back and we go down following year, if we don't spend it, we'll continue to stay in fund balance. If I need it, if revenue falls short, and we're fully permitted to down, whatever, makes that, we're going to be, then we, then we, we back to lower the make it to a million dollar level. So, uh, in terms of what's actually there, well, depending on how we end the fiscal year, to the most, I hate this, I mean, surplus again, for the year in a row, the city, those surplus funds go and replace back into fund balance. And so we're able to grow the sum of our rest. Beyond that, the question, the question asks is, what's the plan if legislature doesn't comfortably get the dollars that the, the governor's supposed? Or we need to think the legislature would consequently, but, but children, however, uh, we know that's probably the reality, which we, we, that the legislature reported out, the governor receiving approximately four-point-six million dollars, which is about eight-hundred thousand dollars of education paid from the general, from what the governor controls. In addition to that, the legislature would possibly store money that we lost, pilot money, other grants, on the road, other high-end, uh, the governor cut. In other words, the governor cut, one hand, you gave, and the other gave, okay? So, at the end of the day, when all is spoken clear, our best guess and estimate would be that we would be as close to winning the lottery as the governor started the process this day was. I understand that the budget is only uses the governor's numbers, uses all of the governor's numbers, good ones, like the education money, and the bad ones, like most of it, like, uh, pilot, middle category, or cut, on the projections. So, what we have potentially is, and again, the legislature does, that we, we may have rules somewhere about after July 1st, do count for the shortfall, if it's a silver line items, based on what's the final number we get out of the governor and out of the legislature. Let me just say, that we can get the same moment before May 15th, with matter, we do the budget now, we do it one more month. Somebody mentioned sales and use tax revenues. We have absolutely no bearing on what we see of the, of the, fully free, cancel, there is a lot of processes. I have never heard us discuss sales, use dollars that the state generates, and anybody reading here, and you know, the month of, if. So, at the end of the day, we'll still be trying to get this conversation tuned, depending on what the final numbers are out of the legislature. It really doesn't matter what the monthly will affect. I like to use the month, March, otherwise, it's something I consider going next year, because it's a longer month. We have a longer period of time in March, so we're working on March and our April, to do your due diligence. In the past, we always use April, but last days in April. You actually have another day, March, you ask your question with your department, so we have multiple committee meetings when necessary. So we get back to the original question, the plan is, depending on what the final numbers that we receive on June 6th, that we, that we're going to be in session, we'll make an analysis of that, we'll come to you and keep reforming what we think we need to do, do to a conference, and we're in a really, really good position. We really would not want to fund that, fund balance anywhere than we are. We would not recommend the council that we take any more out of fund balance, the balance that we're talking about. So the implementation, the senior will keep the implementation, however, the most common is, uh, uh, your honor.
Thank you, Mayor, for that, for that clarification. And again, I apologize for the, didn't ask this during committee meetings, but I'm going to ask it again now, that I just remember that. A constituent came to me during this year, and they asked a question about park renovation, about the, um, the fees to enter the parks. And, uh, because I remember, because I've grown up in this city, we used to get those little buttons that allowed us to get into the parks free. And then, myself having no children, I was not aware, but she told me that that's no longer being done. So, my question is, is it being done, I mean, or is it these kids, I think it's grade school children, are they still allowed in the parks free with their little button? Can someone answer that?
I asked the same question, I'm starting to do, when I started to review some of the things in the park. I don't know what it stopped, but it did stop sometime. I have no immediate plan, uh, with this.
Okay.
The town park does generate, fair enough, a, 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 a,
But again, the question that she, again, is following up, because this is an important issue to her. I mean, she's being a low-income person, she really can't afford to send her children to the town park, but she can't afford to go in. So my, my, I mean, my question, which we can take, hopefully on, on, we address this, but I think it's an important issue, that we need to at least address some type of funding to allow low-income, how, low-income people to use our parks, because, I mean, I don't know, with the five dollars, for some, that's a lot of money. And if they can't use the park, it's really not giving service to these. So I would, uh, at least recommend to the council that we at least address this issue. I guess, not, I hope to do it this evening, but I think, at least I'll bring this back up, so hopefully you can start looking into it a little bit further.
I will, I will do that. I, I can't just put the numbers out on top of my head, you know, the daily task, the seasonal task, or the handrails, I'm, I'm, sorry. But we can take a look at it and see if there's some kind of, maybe, uh, also be allowed.
And there's one more comment that we're ready to have. Follow-up with, um, Councilman Moreilles regarding the budget, uh, process on the grants. Um, I know we brought this up last year, which is why we moved to a separate, um, committee just for budgets, and it was at that point in time of duplication of services. It was mentioned a few months ago, it was mentioned again at the budget hearing here, and I would, please, ask this council again, to again, consider taking a look at the whole grant process to prevent duplication of services to where we can come up with a better way of, of issuing the grants, that it'd be, actually, to take the political end of it, where all, uh, agencies can benefit equally, and then actually the money is used to benefit the city as a whole. Thank you, Your Honor. And thank you, Your Honor.
I just want to know the process, you know, if everybody had an opportunity, people talk about duplication of actors, money that wasn't spent properly, nobody ever made things. My responsibility is to hear consequences, to deal with that, so these, it's kind of like, oh, there's duplication of actors. The responsibility is to come to a meeting, to share with us who is doing that, so we can look at that in particular actions. Not to put it out, we could also, the mayor's saying, to say, duplication of actors. And the ironic thing is, when we had the man's meeting, we had a discussion about duplication of actors, people wanted to give agencies more money, and so they say, well, so, folks, you know, we, we went back to no rate, and I can't. So, I think that this council, after having a floor of, uh, gloss, and really delve into that, and look at that a very serious case by case basis, and make the pain of cutting people who expect that money, give them their eight percent of their, we got this, we got this.
Senator, I'd like to move a quick motion.
Motion to make the question, two seconds, to see various, the main motion, which is in debate, in favor of moving the question, so if you want to say aye?
Aye.
Your composition? This time we're down to answers, Perkins and the negative, so, definitely two. This time now we're down to the main motion, in favor of adopting the two thousand seven, two thousand eight grant, if you want to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, if you want to say nay?
Nay.
Negative, if you agree, yes, if you can, if you can, now, back to the call. And, 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 and,[907.83]
For the veterans, they could be filled by other people.
Well, that's how it is right now.
Would the per diem be reduced?
By the definition of per diem, you're paid by the veteran being in the bed. So if the veteran's not in the bed, currently those five beds that we open up during the winter months are unfunded by our current sources. So this would be additional funding when we have the veterans in the beds.
Through you, Your Honor. So we're not guaranteed one hundred and fifty bucks a day for a year? We have to come up with the bodies.
And we absolutely, I mean through our point in town count and surveys, twenty percent of our homeless individuals are veterans. And we can see it already in our HMIS system.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just for my benefit and maybe some other council people, how many beds are in the new streets like Fire Marshal?
We have a CO for twenty beds.
How many of those are currently by grant have to be used by DSS?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, TSA pays for fifteen?
Correct.
So those five extra beds could be used for anybody who walks in? How are those extra five beds used?
You mean now or if we receive the funding? Well, now, when we expand through the wintertime, therefore, anybody who comes in that is in need of services.
And so once this grant's approved, those extra five beds would be used strictly for veterans?
If we had the bodies, correct.
If you have, okay.
Or I should say, when we have the bodies.
So they would have priority, I would imagine. So if you had fifteen, if you had seventeen, if you had twenty-one people who want to get in there, so those five veterans would have priority over that extra one person?
Correct, and that's what the beauty of our partnerships with Dorothy Day and also the overflow. We're able to accommodate those people during that time.
Any discussion? Say nothing, I'll try your minds, all the papers that signify it's an Aye.
Aye.
Resolution, part dial ride. Do you want to mark them from the review? Head for your review is the resolution of authorizing the disatonic area regional transit, Richard Schreiner, to negotiate and execute all necessary agreements slash contract documents on behalf of the City of Danbury with the Department of Transportation of the State of Connecticut for the elderly and disabled demand responsive transportation expanded program. Nelson Manchester request, the Councilhouse has requested to consider this resolution at its next meeting. Do you have any questions or require any further information? Please contact my office.
With pleasure, Council. Welcome, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication, approve the resolution allowing the disatonic area regional transit of Richard Schreiner authority to negotiate and execute the necessary agreements and/or contracts on behalf of the City of Danbury with the State Department of Transportation for the elderly and disabled demand responsive transportation expanded program.
Thank you, Your Honor. How much does this grant worth? Is it a dollar value?
Yes, the grand amount is sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars. Five thousand of that amount goes to the Wheels program.
Report, impact statements.
Honor. I'll make a motion, then we waive the reading of this since we all have it here.
We've waived the reading since all members have copies. Second, I'd like to address Perkins, small number, please. This is the House of the Senate.
Aye.
Motion for the House of the Senate. I'd like to question, would you please, with pleasure, Council?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the report and take no action.
Second.
With pleasure, Council, receive the report and take no action. Would you, discussion, with Jason?
Thank you, Your Honor. In reading this report, my question would be to the Director of Planning. Is there supposed to be a page two? No? So it just ends just like that?
Further discussion, with pleasure, Council.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to the Director of Planning. Are you suggesting that developers can give us some good unbiased impact statements about projects that they'd like us to approve?
No.
Thank you.
Well, you can ask for data, you know, hard facts, that kind of thing. But what you need is somebody who takes that and interprets it, reads it, interprets it, comes to conclusions. That's what you need.
Through you, Your Honor. Do we?
Like guaranteed.
Yes.
So many of our traffic impact analyses, their conclusion will be just not as much.
Then through you, Your Honor, do we have such a person in our planning department?
Yeah. And you're talking about, this is kind of a special area. You're talking about taking, as this was sent to us, submission of periodic impact statements from the various public safety departments, fire police, emergency medical, and high rate. And again, for that, but typically it's looking the other way around. And they would have to provide any kind of, you know, if you don't have access.
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, I got to make it a long one. All right, let me stand. I guess the whole purpose of my awful impact statement is for this council to get a better feeling of what's happening in our city. So the question here is not for the planning commission to give you reports, but us as a council to get this report. So when there's a development that may have happened throughout our city, I mean, we can go to the Fire Marshal, and he can give us the report that, yes, that the building X, Y, and Z, that his needs are being currently met, and we know what those needs are. So the purpose of these impact statements is not for the planning commission, but for us as a council, so we can get a feeling that our city is properly being addressed by, that the public safety departments have what they need to do their jobs.
Yeah, but it's not a simple set.
Why not? It's just a simple request from them, it's their opinion. And that's why we're asking.
That type of point now, and I will reiterate at this late hour. What kind of information will be required? What criteria will be used? Who will evaluate the data? How will it impact our review process? And what will be the practical results of such a process?
Well, that's a.
And I answer those questions first.
And then that's why we're getting that issue needs on an ad hoc committee, so as a commander, we could address those issues. But that's why I'm saying.
Let me just say to you, Mr. James, that Chief of Police, fire chief, all of them, do analysis of every five percent, and that will be protected since you go to the department. Chief Division Two Thousand Nine Plan rejected certain broken population needs in terms of recent action. The fire chief's fact, uh, incident on the west side, they did protect it thirty years ago. I think it's done. But those are the decisions they made in terms of their recommendation process for the council about budgeting and about hiring, and so on. Some of that does go on now in terms of the impact of the report.
Thinking how.
Cannot turn down a proposal because it's been a part of your work, really, to protect. Understand that.
But we, as a council, we need to know that, so we do when we do our budgets. As a council, we would know that we need more of what I've said in the areas.
So that's what we do at the department?
But we need that communication here. That's the whole purpose of these impact statements. Yet the work is already being done through your applications. The simple request is that give us copies in their monthly reports on that, and that could be a simple solution to the problem.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the report and refer it back to the existing ad hoc committee.
Before Senator's court assessment project, Wolf, Pridewood, Pride, Southwood, Pride, and Fire Week.
Council consent to waive the reading of the reports? Straighten this consent to waive reading of the reports. Would you have a motion to act on it?
Thank you, Your Honor. Although I applaud Mr. Chee's efforts, I would like to make a motion at this time that we receive the reports and take no action.
With pleasure, to receive the report and take no action. Second, with my counsel, Bassel. Any discussion?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess the whole purpose of getting this was not through me. This was through my constituents, through me, to basically their question. It was a simple question, and I couldn't answer that question for them. And I'm going to direct this to the Public Works Director, and I'm sure he has a wonderful idea of how to address this issue. But the question is, and I think every council member has probably at once dealt with this question, I need sewers. Why do I got to wait fifteen years for the time I get a sewer? And it's frustrating to them, it's frustrating to us, and it's frustrating to the city. So I'm going to give it to Antonio. I'm sure he has the answer to the question.
Sure. I'm going to try to keep this brief. I addressed some of these issues during my budget presentation. The mayor had asked me pretty early in my tenure to look into this process, to find out if there was any way to expedite, to find out where the roadblocks were. I'm in the process right now of trying to get my hands around the process. I've done quite a bit of work with it, I've had some discussions with you about it. There's got to be a better way to do this. I don't have the answer right now, but I am looking into it. I am, with my current budget proposal, I am going to dedicate one person full-time to not only having communications with the general public, but with you guys on where these projects are. Can I give you an answer where your project is? It's sixteen out of thirty-one, thirty-nine projects? I can't today, based on the current process that we have. So that needs to change. We cannot have a zero answer for the public when they ask these types of questions. But the only way to fix that is to improve the process and base some timelines so we can move it ahead.
So I guess the question, which is again in your referral report here on Jackson Drive, because it's the number one here. So October fourth, nineteen ninety-four, and spring two thousand and seven, when you talk fifteen years, to you, that's very unacceptable. And you think in a year from now, those type of delays won't occur?
I think it's unreasonable for a city to be implementing a project that this council approved in nineteen ninety-four. That's my personal opinion. I think it's the opinion of my entire staff. But we are, we really have to study this process that has been developed over the last twenty-five years. There's been things that have been added to it, there's things that have been deleted. I don't think everybody's, anybody's done a comprehensive look at the administrative process and what we can do to improve it. There were some communications in the file in two thousand and three. Somebody attempted to look at it, but it didn't go any further.
Let me just say that the problem now is we have so many projects in the queue.
It's wrong.
In some of them, incredibly complex, we look at point out hills, for example. That is spaghetti up there. So, you know, nobody wants to tell residents, no, it's just not practical. The sewer project, that case, it's a hundred dollar job. One of the directors of Human Care told us to look at this visualization, and that makes it happen. Speed of processing, double the volume.
Your Honor, I, I know, I agree.
Play motorola.
Anthony, I wanted to mention on the report that you added to this. I mean, from October fourth, nineteen ninety-four, from Jackson Drive, we only okayed last year. I mean, I think it's phenomenal what you have put in here so that we know what is going on. And I think this is a big, big process that you went through, and I want to, and I want to thank you for it.
And I tell you, the city engineer and his staff, they realize, just like I do, that there's, there has to be a better way to do this. They have done everything to prepare and get all of the administrative work done so we can study the process. And that's really what we need to do over the next six months, is really study that process.
Through the chair. You know, another thing is, I've been on the council twelve years, so I have seen things that have been brought up a time and time and time again, and the people kept knocking it down. But we did change a law a couple of years ago that you, if you put in for it, you knock it down, you can't come back for five years. That helped us, so that now everybody wants it. We got about ninety-five, I think.
Okay, any further discussion, with pleasure, Council. Say nothing, I'll try your minds, all the papers that signify it's an Aye.
Aye.
Motion for the House of the Senate. I believe, uh, thirty resigned.
Twenty-nine.
All right, twenty-nine. So we're going to wait for the reading of the report. All right, with pleasure, Council.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the report and take no action at this time.
Yeah, thanks, Your Honor. I'd like to beg the council's indulgence to send this to an ad hoc committee. I appreciate the report that Attorney Gotchalk returned recently. It turns out that in a game of pin the tail on the donkey, the state statutes kind of cover every single thing except the center request, which is to restrict the use of hands-free telephones on buses. The state statute does not address it. It addresses handheld phones, it addresses accessories for handheld phones. It does not address hands-free phones, the use of hands-free phones on school buses. That's objection number one. Objection number two, there's a question as to whether the municipalities have the authority to regulate this in the first place, and there's a statute from nineteen forty-one that might suggest that it doesn't, but kind of closer inspection, they're really talking about equipment that's attached to cars like lights and brakes and things like that. So it looks like we've got the authority to do this. And then finally, and I don't want to get into a big deal about this, but the final thing is that these state statutes do not even address at all passenger buses, commercial buses. So we've got, we've got a little bit of work to do to get through this, and Attorney Gotchalk and I are pretty confident that in ad hoc, we can hammer this out without too much trouble. Thank you.
Okay, and that connection of the system following, Council Bassel, Council Stanley, Council Perkins. Uh, third, I'm thirty, as I said, I'm thirty-one.
Your Honor, I would make a motion to accept this report and approve the recommendations of the committee and revert to a public hearing.
Objection, there's still more. Thirty-two, that's the question. Uh, we came off, thank you. Okay, again, we'll wait for the reading of the report. Yep, we'll wait for the reading of the report. With pleasure, Council. The Ayes. Yeah. And with pleasure, Council, the right to, uh, the chief of the department, and not the right to move from the government. And the first of the public. Uh, so, Jackson, and so on, here. Thirty-three. We're going to wait for the reading of the report. You want to have a reading, Brad? Yeah, with purpose.
Ad hoc report, First Night Danbury, Thursday, March eighth, two thousand and seven. Chairwoman Jane Diggs called the meeting to order at six thirty PM on Thursday, March eighth, two thousand and seven, in the caucus room, third floor, Danbury City Hall, one fifty-five Deerville Avenue. Present were committee members Ted Casapas and Paul Rotella. Also present were Assistant Finance Director Dan Garrett, City Center Representative Andrea Gardner-Davara, Betsy McAvan, Treasurer of First Night Danbury, Nick Hoffman, Ward Member of First Night Danbury, and also Debbie Pacific, Volunteer Coordinator of First Night Danbury. Petitioners were Wayne Perkins, John Esposito, Paul Rotella, Will Tavershack, and interested citizens. Chairwoman Diggs explained that the charge of the committee was to review and to make recommendations concerning First Night Danbury and other issues that may arise during these overall discussions. In doing some research on her own, Chairwoman Diggs found that the City of Stanford had not had First Night for many years as a result of the lack of funding and volunteers. While the City of Hartford has had First Night for many years, there was a possibility it might be disbanded due to a lack of volunteers or funding. Chairwoman Diggs was under the impression that City Center of Danbury planned the event, however discovered that First Night was its own entity, a five oh one C three entity with its own board. Chairwoman Diggs opened the meeting up for discussion, comments, and questions. Ms. McAvan gave a basic background of First Night. She explained that there is an organization, First Night International, whereby a license fee of three hundred and fifty dollars is paid yearly in order to use the name First Night. She pointed out that the changes in the city have put a strain on the event. Attendance has declined through the years, and the board has decided to disband this event. Ms. McAvan explained that First Night was not conducted for two thousand and seven due to lack of volunteers and funding. The perception is that the energy has gone out of the First Night event. Ms. Pacific noted the extensive effort she put forth to try and acquire volunteers where they've been, and in the end, only fifteen volunteers have been secured. Ms. McAvan pointed out that a minimum of forty volunteers are needed to run a First Night event. Mr. Hoffman noted that the two thousand and six event was put together as a result of last minute efforts, but ended up being an abbreviated version of previous First Night events. He reminded everyone of the snowstorm that occurred of Jaws of Liberty, the overall success of this event. Chairwoman Diggs asked the petitioners why they signed the petition to preserve First Night. Mr. Perkins did not feel the failure of First Night was primarily caused by lack of funding or lack of volunteers, and desired to explore the situation further. Councilman Rotella noted that while the interest in First Night seemed to dwindle, he desired to see First Night continue and urge patience as he felt once the first generational cycle of First Night passed, that generations to follow and continue their First Night tradition become a stronger presence in the community for many years to come. An example he used was the Fourth of July celebrations. Councilman Rotella commended all those involved with First Night who have more than fourteen years of dedication to the event. Ms. Tavershack pointed out that Danbury's economy has benefited as a result of various towns not having a First Night celebration, and as it draws those desires to participate in a First Night celebration to Danbury. She expressed a desire for First Night to continue and suggested involving the Office of Economic Development at City Center in helping to promote this event. Ms. McAvan pointed out that while First Night has been a separate organization, the executive director of City Center has been a member of the board of First Night, and the board has been allowed to use City Center as their headquarters. She pointed out that fifty thousand dollars is needed in order to properly run this event, and as a result of the declining interest, it has proven not to be a wise investment for businesses. City Center Representative Andrea Gardner-Davara entered the meeting at this point. Chairwoman Diggs asked Mr. Vare to comment on First Night. Mr. Vare felt that anything that draws people to downtown Danbury is working silly. Ms. McAvan informed the committee that at a recent board meeting, there was a vote to disband the organization First Night Danbury International as of April the fourth. As there is interest in retaining the First Night event, Mr. Vare suggested not disband the five oh one C three because it would take two years in order to reestablish your five oh one C three and be eligible for any state funding. Councilman Casapas asked the First Night representatives why they thought First Night failed. They all agreed it was lack of funding, volunteers, and participants. Ms. McAvan pointed out that there is a perception that it is dangerous to get in downtown Danbury after dark, and the event just was not attracting enough people to participate. Councilman Casapas asked the petitioners what they desired from the city. Mr. Perkins desired putting in place a new board to fill in the need existing five oh one C three, and felt the city could assist by continuing the ad hoc meetings, which were for the targeted to five year olds. Council, Chairwoman Diggs pointed out that First Night is a private entity, and the city does not have jurisdiction over it, and can now find new members to fill the seats on the board. While Councilman Casapas agreed with the First Night event continuing and noted the interest in First Night, he did not believe it was a function of the city of Danbury to run First Night, nor did the City of Danbury do a better job of facilitating the event of the First Night organization. Councilman Casapas, Chairwoman Diggs, and Ms. Tavershack all volunteered to help the petitioners with their quest of keeping alive the First Night tradition in Danbury. Mr. Vare suggested charging the cities, charging citizens of Danbury with the task of preserving the event as well. Councilman Rotella suggested continuing the meeting as the issue was complex, and time was a major concern as well. He did, he did not wish to see the five oh one C three dissolve. He asked that consultation with Corporation Council take place in order to ascertain whether or not the commitment transferred to a new board. Ms. McAvan informed him that the yearly fee merely needed to be paid to First Night International. However, in order to preserve the five oh one C three, three officers were needed to exist. A motion was made by Councilman Rotella to continue the ad hoc meeting to explore Corporation Council transfers of a shell organization, the five oh one C three. The motion died due to a lack of a set. Chairwoman Diggs expressed concern that the event would become an undertaking of city and did not support continuing the committee. While there were money, while there were money and attendance issues, the lack of interest in First Night might be a sign that new event ideas are needed. Councilman Casapas agreed that First Night, as it presently stands, will not be successful, but desired it to succeed. A motion was made by Councilman Casapas and seconded by Chairwoman Diggs to take no action on the petitioner's request at this time. Councilman Rotella felt it was premature to table the committee with no action. He felt if no action was taken at the meeting, then First Night would cease to exist. Councilman Rotella noted the city had many resources to assist in facilitating the event. Councilman Casapas asked Ms. Pacific, Mr. Hoffman, and Ms. McAvan, through the chair, that they felt First Night would be successful and viable in Danbury. All three agreed it could not. The motion carried two one, no vote, covered by Councilman Rotella. A motion to adjourn was made by Councilman Casapas, seconded by Councilman Rotella. The motion carried unanimously at seven fourteen PM. Respectfully submitted, Jane Diggs, Chairwoman Casapas, and Paul Rotella. Respectfully submitted, January's Chairwoman Kassumpis involved Rotella.
Hello there, Councilman. Would you please, Council?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to be accepted in court and approve the meeting of the city. That ends.
Sorry, Dave, second by Councilman Kassumpis. Uh, discussion. Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Your Honor, for giving me the opportunity to address this issue. I'd like to just start off by saying something that Councilman Rotella said at the council meeting. He was one of the people there who actually understood that this is a very complex issue. It concerns things like quality of life, family traditions, and community heritage. I'm just going to make three points to help summarize this, this matter. After I left that meeting, my head was, my head was spinning, not just from the sandbags that land on it, but also from the series of events that played out. I asked a few prodding questions, and I just couldn't get a straight answer. It occurred to me later on that there was an elephant in the room. Organizers were dogged by leadership that lacked vision, offered little to no creativity, and could not organize people into effective work groups. There's your elephant. Concerning the funding and the volunteers, I spoke with one of the organizers who made a point to explain to me that they could get corporate sponsoring. And don't, no, tell people that they couldn't, because that's not the case. So, again, there were sources of funding available to them, so that does dispel part of that funding myth. Secondly, volunteers. I, we were told at the meeting that hundreds of emails were sent out to get volunteers. Quite frankly, sending out emails to get volunteers is a very ineffective way to get volunteers, especially for an event like this. Could that work be considered a hard effort? Absolutely. Was it working smart? Absolutely not. I, third point, I just want to make it perfectly clear that we didn't want the city to take over First Night like the city had done for another organization. Really, what I wanted to do is buy some time to provide us an opportunity to establish a new board of directors. And by the way, a week or two before this meeting, they all quit. Those organizers that were at the subcommittee meeting, they quit. Another thing that would allow us to do is preserve that 501(c)(3) status. Andrea Javara from City Center was there, and she explained to us the importance of preserving that entity. She also, as we heard from the minutes, that this event is definitely worth pursuing. And one of the last things that we were trying to accomplish here was to basically confer with Corporation Counselor to help explain to us how all of this stuff could become possible. But as you heard, the motion was shot down, and well, that was basically the end of First Night. They killed it. And also, one last point, I think it was a little on the irresponsible side for those organizers who had already quit to say that this whole event wasn't viable. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, you know, I respect everything that Councilman Perkins has said. I fail to see an exception that the city of Danbury. All of the suggestions that you made are, are things that can be done. They do not need our okay or our involvement. That board of directors can vote to stay in existence. They can provide a new board of directors. They can find somebody with new ideas, which I agree is absolutely necessary. And they can call people and ask for volunteers as they've done in the past, instead of you now. But I don't see why that requires action on the part of the city.
Would there be further discussion?
They also call people because I did volunteer at First Night, and I found fewer and fewer people coming. You're welcome.
Can I, may I ask all the favoritists to signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, if you can, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Perkins, discuss the situation. I love it. Thirty-four. Is Dan Wester waiting for the reading of the reports? Done that, would you please, Council? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Moved to receive the report and approve the recommendation of the committee.
May you see the report?
Very briefly, I think this expenditure is a waste of taxpayers' money. Matt Rodriguez actually provides the point-of-entry data. He's a vendor for the Partnership for Strong Communities, and we don't pay him a red cent. But it's not a huge waste of money, and you are certainly entitled to waste it.
Does he have a second? Any further discussion? Mr. Perkins.
We sat down with this organization a couple of other times before and requested specific types of information. They, they have provided some of it, but what we really end up getting is several photocopied sheets from, I think it's the H MIS report. Requested specific information concerning individuals' last permanent addresses, including zip codes, but some of that information was there, reasons why they became homeless, displaced from families, family issues, fire, mental illness. None of that information is provided. Services that were seeking, when they come into the organizations, none of that's provided. And what services are being provided to have to help people leave the organization and be pretty much self-supported? That information isn't supported either. I voted to just abstain from that vote. If I can't get that information, probably by the next council meeting, I'll urge all the other members to vote against additional funding.
Further discussion? So, then I'll try your minds, all the favoritists to signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, if you can, say aye. Negative, Mr. Perkins? I have thirty-five. Objection, wait for the reading of the report. Pleasure, Council?
Thank you, Your Honor. Moved to receive the report and approve the recommendation of the committee.
Okay, then, receive the report. We're twenty seconds, now, those are the discussion. And then I'll try your minds, all the favoritists to signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, if you can, say aye. Mr. Perkins, is that the, 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 the? Thirty-six will be drawn. Would you please, the final request? Red. Should be all of them? I think that should probably start at the first one here and continue on. But I will make a motion, seeing that all members have copies, and copies are on file in the City Clerk's office, that we wait for the reading of the department reports. Hold on, folks. Discussion of the report. Seeing that, now then, I'll try your minds, accept the report, and signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Before we go, before we go, I'd like the floor for just a quick second. I want to thank everybody on this panel, regardless of how you voted, and any people that voted above it. I want to thank you for your hard work, your commitment, your passion coming to each meeting. It's appreciated. The taxpayers of the city appreciate it. And I want to encourage you to keep up the good work. You have that up, and extend all committees? And I want to take a motion to adjourn. Make a motion that we adjourn. And execute it all, may I, Mr. Perkins, by saying aye?
Aye.